At exactly seven PM. I do have all of the councilmen in attendance and we will conduct business. Let the record also show that Town Clerk Gray and Billing Clerk Newwich Wander are also in attendance. Would you please stand for the Pledgeable Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Is your mic on there? Ah, no. But it will be. Okay. The first item on the agenda would be to reconvene the meeting from the work session to this meeting. Could I get a motion to reconvene the meeting?
I move to reconvene the town council meeting.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilman Rock, second by Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing not opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to, make sure I don't lose my spot here, is to adopt the agenda. Could I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
I still move.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved by Councilman Merrill, second by Councilman Denny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing not opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is announcements and proclamation. And Sheriff Johnson was supposed to be here tonight, but I do not see him in the audience. He did tell me that if they were busy, he would not be here, so we'll move on. The next item on the agenda is the public comment section. This section is reserved for comments from the public on items that are not otherwise included in this agenda. So you have three minutes. Would anyone like to come forward with public comments? All right.
All right, I'll take them.
Hey, you want to stay? You want to go up there? Just state your name.
Hello, Chuck Hewens. Thanks for filling in some of the potholes on Vista today. That's nice, there's still a few others. We count on the way down here. I noticed you have speed, electronic speed signs on several roads. I'll say two of them that I know of never work. I've driven by it so many times at different speeds just to see if they would. They don't. I recommend getting one.
Cedar Creek and Vista West, right?
Yes.
Because the, yeah, the batteries are on.
Those are the two that I see, yeah.
Yep. Thank you very much. Thanks for your comments.
Dave Saigren, I just wanted to say thank you actually to the council, the personals that set up the farmer's markets. Those were super cool this summer. Really appreciated. I know it took a lot of work, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item is the consent agenda. I will go through, read each consent agenda items, and then after, I can ask, I'll ask for public comment if there's any public comment. But also I'd like to remind the council that the council has the right to pull those, any of those forward if there's action that needs to be taken on any of those items on the consent agenda. So the first thing is to approve the minutes for August 3rd council workshop, work session, August 8th town council meeting, August 8th council work session. Next one is, B is disbursements, C is community board appointments, and that would be Lynn Updike, Planning and Zoning Board, that'll expire in 2024. We have the dispatch report, we have the court report, and we have the special municipal officer report. Any comments? Okay. We'll move forward and
We need a vote.
I vote to adopt the consent agenda. Sorry.
I move you adopt the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing not opposed, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing section, and we have a resolution, Resolution 23-09-12-001 Water Fund, correction of Resolution 23-08-002. Oh, he's here. Would you like to come up before we do anything else?
Sure.
This is what happens when I put you first, right?
Sorry for being a little late.
That's okay.
Thanks, Mayor and council for having me. Appreciate that. I'm here to request the mayor to cover a couple things and I'm sure that, I need to get in a little better shape coming up to Stara. I need a minute. One of them is the problems that arise from some of the Airbnb type rentals and what we can do about that and maybe address some of the issues that come up, whether they're going to be an ordinance thing or a law enforcement issue that we need to work together on. So that conversation needs to be open. Mayor and I have talked a little bit about the contract that we have that's pretty dated at this point, and it's probably time to address that based on the needs of Star Valley Ranch and also what's going on in the sheriff's office and the rest of the area, so. I want to hit on one thing real quick that the mayor asked me to about Code Red and explain what that is. Most people probably know that, what it is, but it's basically an emergency system operated out of the county that allows us to draw a circle around an area and send out notifications to everybody in that area. And so it could be anything from a natural disaster type of thing or an event going on in the area that's, that people need to be aware of, lost child, anything, anything like that, that would be beneficial for us to contact the community. If you have a landline phone, if you have a wired in phone at your home, you're probably already in the system. If you have a cell phone, you need to register if you haven't done that. And so you can go to the website. It used to be easy, lcwy.org. It may still work, but the new website is Lincoln County W Y dot gov. And if you go there, you can register your phone number in your area, so that would allow notifications to be sent. And you can, when you do that, you can pick a few different ways, text, phone call, email, or all of the above. So it's a kind of important system. It allows you to get notifications of things that are going on, and it may even be something that comes from the town that may need us to send out a notification such as something to do with the water or something to do with the sewer system or something that needs, everybody needs a notification. It's a quick one to do.
We live in an area where we have a lot of wild animals. We've had two report, no, excuse me, one report, me citing. One report was a cat was in the area. By the time I guess the mayor announced to us, it's too late. Is that something you'd put on there? Because if we got a cougar in the area, those people in that area or hikers need to understand it. Secondly, is there's a, there was a cow most, or a cat, which is more dangerous than a cougar. Does this fit into that type criteria or is that not up there?
Yeah, if there's a danger to the public or that we need to make aware, I think that fits.
Well, if you had a moose sitting behind this house in the street and you have hikers, walkers going by, does that consider endangerment or not?
Well
I won't put lunch on his spot.
I think, I think the argument can be made that that's a useful
Tool.
That system is useful for that, yeah.
Does that come through the mayor or does that come from the individual?
So it typically, it should come from the mayor. You can call and our emergency management people are the ones that run that system, yeah. So you can go directly to them. And why I'm heading a little bit is they, they're going to make that decision, and they may come and ask me, and I can influence that, but most of the time it's directly emergency management and they make that call once they sit down, so. It's, that system is not run specifically out of the sheriff's office. We utilize it, but it's not, it's under emergency management, which is actually under the sheriff's office, but they operate of their own, so. Just an update for the sheriff's office, we obviously going into a new budget year, we did add a deputy to the Star Valley area. One of probably many more to come, I think, if we keep going in the direction that we're going with additional building and moving in, the population going up. So we are fully staffed right now, even with the new position, for the first time in a long time. So the other things that are coming up, you know, I'm not one to make excuses, but being staffed makes a big difference in being able to have response times and being proactive. If we're running from call to call, calls coming in dispatch, it's tough to come up and run radar and the other, and it's just, you know, I don't want to make an excuse, that's the reality. One thing that I did put in the budget this year for is extra overtime to just put out shifts for just traffic enforcement and contract places and other high areas that we have complaints about speeders. So it's ranch, Alpine thing, some overtime in there so we can just put out an extra person to focus only on some traffic enforcement, get people slowed down. It's the, between dogs and speeders, that's, I mean, that's pretty much what we do. We have, of course, we have other things that happen and, you know, we've had some biggest incidents this year, but the reality is, is there, the people, the thing people get fired up about is speeders and dogs, so. I know that the mayor has mentioned to me that we need to step it up with some traffic enforcement in the town, and I agree with that. And my hope is that with, we can be more on the proactive side and now that we're staffed and we are sending one to the academy, one, we have one at the academy right now, but she'll be back in about a month and a half, and we'll have everybody out on the roads. Doesn't directly relate to Star Valley Ranch, but by way of information, I think all of you know that the, Kemmer is the county seat, and so when we make an arrest anywhere in the county, they go to Kemmer. If you, if you happen to get a DUI up Snake River Canyon, by the time you get to Kemmer to jail, you're, you're pretty much sober, yeah. And that's a long drive. It's a long drive for the person arrested, and it's a long drive for the deputy too. We sometimes do transfers, but part of, we built a new facility about eight or nine years ago, and we are, again, going to bring in some state inmates into that facility because the state needs to offload some inmates, and we have the room for it. So that's going to be coming up here in a couple of weeks, and we're going to, we've done it in the past, COVID shut it down, and we're going to be doing that again, which is, is a good thing for the county to fill those beds, and it's, it basically makes the payment on that facility when we're able to do that, which is nice, so. Other than that, unless there's something specific that you want me to cover, I'm sure that there are some questions and see if I can answer them, if not at all.
I had a couple of questions. Fireworks, is that your jurisdiction or is that the SMO jurisdiction? If we have a fireworks at midnight, what's the best way to take care of that? I mean, what response, but I'm not sure if you can get here in time to contact, to get hold of somebody or whatever, so.
Yeah, so
It's kind of a lost cause, you know, for, for the lost.
We, that, that time of year of the fireworks, we could put out three or four additional deputies on those nights just to respond to fireworks call. Like anything else, the, as the calls come in, they get prioritized, and fireworks are not going to be, even though it's making somebody mad and keeping them up, it's not going to go to the top of that list. It's going to, it's going to fall down, and we'll get there when we can. And like you said, with the cost of fireworks, they're usually out by that time when you get here, but there, it isn't, so fireworks is not a state law. Actually, it is, but it's not, it's not a, the county can allow fireworks in the county area, and they are allowed in all the county areas. So the ordinance is a Star Valley Ranch ordinance, and as far as the enforcement side, other than us responding and shutting it down, enforcement and the citation would fall to the municipal officer. If you want to bring them into court, you guys have a healthy court system, I mean, we, it's, it's not a joke if you get cited in Star Valley Ranch, it's, it's pretty serious. The judge does a very good job, so.
And I do know that the deputies have accompanied him several times during the fireworks, but you're correct, catching him is a challenge. So, what are the questions, council?
We're getting out of that season now, but I know it's the month of July, early August is a, is a challenge with that.
Did you have another question, councilman? No? Anybody else? It's quiet today. We've been in meetings like since nine or something.
I don't want to take any more of the president. The other thing I would say about fireworks is just that the municipal officer has the opportunity to go out and issue a citation later, so if it's not going to give you a relief right at that moment, maybe if we're not, and we will respond if we're available. And we, there was some, you know, I got a letter that forwarded to me, and there was some question about, something said about dispatcher didn't really want to send anybody. Well, it did, it's not, I don't know, I went and listened to the recordings, I didn't hear that, but what was, what does happen is a prioritization, and there's, if it's a, certainly, if it's just, if it's an ordinance and we have our calls going, that's not going to jump to the priority list.
It's the investigation process. I mean, somebody shooting them up, you know, with the citizens out there going to the door and knocking, it's probably not safe for them, but the actual process of contacting, getting, shutting them down or whatever, is not safe for citizens. So that's where the people with the gun show up, a little bit more respect to them.
No, I agree, and we will respond if we're available and if we can. Ultimately, the enforcement part, get them into court, is going to be on the municipal officer. And, you know, as we look at the contract that we have, you know, some, some of those things may be important enough to the town that we, that we address those in a contract. But again, it's got to be in a, in a way that we have the resources to do it, so the more resources, the more money, and, you know, all that plays into that, but there's certainly, for example, with Alpine, it was the public intoxication, which is not a state law, it's, it can be a town ordinance, intoxicated pedestrian on highways is state law, but just a public intoxication is not. Sometimes that's a really good tool to shut something down because you don't have, it gives you an ability to stop something instead of going on and on and on, and so that was included in the contract there. So there may be things like that as we sit down again, that
Yeah.
May be important enough to the town that we take a look at it and see what we can do about that.
Oh, we do have some questions now.
Did I understand the SMO can go out the next day and write a citation for fireworks?
True.
Yeah, he's done that.
How do you, how does, how's that documented? The next day, it's going to be a lot of hearsay, isn't it?
Well
How, how does the resident document that that happened?
So
So when they go to court, it's
Like, like anything that we do, you have to have a probable cause. You have to have, you have to have something there. You can't, there's two things that can happen. He has enough information to say that this is the place that was lighting off, these are the people, and I'm going to issue a citation. Or, and I don't know how the judge handles it here, but there could be a complaint. In other words, the neighbor that's the complaint can sign it, and then you sign as a complaint, and that person gets cited based on your knowledge of that ordinance violation, and then you would be required to come to court and say, yes, I saw them light off fireworks, nobody was able to respond that night, but a lot of people don't want to do that, but that's, but that's an option as well.
I didn't know it could be done the next day.
And we did one, we did a couple this summer, and it was, we had witnesses, and they left a pile of fireworks in their driveway. So that one was kind of easy.
If there's, if there's probable cause, there's a citation.
Didn't know that. Thank you.
Yes.
Do you have, do you need, do you want office space within our town?
So as this continues to grow, I think that would be beneficial. We have a little spot in Alpine that we're trying to utilize with a computer and a printer, so we don't have to go back to the office and do reports. A lot of it can be done in the vehicle, but accidents reports still don't work on our mobile system. So if there is a place, good internet connection that we can get on our system and come here and sit down at a computer and print some things, then we would utilize that.
Okay. That's good to know.
You need a good computer.
Do your deputies carry breathalyzers, you know, the blow-in, the little ones, the
Portable ones?
Yeah, the portable ones, do they?
Yeah, all of that things have them.
Okay, so, well, you said they might be sobered by the time they reach any road, so.
So on a DUI, yeah, we, we'll do a chemical test before. We'll stop in Afton and do a chemical test there, either breathalyzer or blood drop, and then we'll transfer. So it turns into a long night, but My, my point was, it's a big county and you tie up a deputy for about five hours when you get your arrest, so that's, that all plays into it.
Okay, one more.
I'm not going to push out a spot, just going to ask you to do me a favor. I'm concerned about the traffic, the speed, and what we're doing and what we're not doing, but appearances really make a difference. I don't have this much report for you all, but I have the July report. On the July report, it says three reckless driving incidents. And up at the top, it says citations zero, warnings zero. And so if I am a person reading that, I say, hell, I'm going reckless, it doesn't matter because you guys aren't giving me tickets. So either the reporting was wrong, the report was wrong, or God forbid, you need to tell your deputies, if it's reckless driving, as a kid, I never made it past reckless driving. I mean, I was in front of the court, so.
So I, I, I don't know that there's a problem in the recording, so what, what could possibly happen in that is someone calls in a reckless driving. They say, we saw him going this way, and we don't locate him. The other thing is, if we don't observe something, then we, then we have to have that person that called it in sign a complaint. So if they're willing to sign a complaint, and we can, and we find them, we have a plate number, and they're willing to sign a complaint, that would result in a citation. So it's very possible that there were those calls.
I'm not telling you.
Yeah, and, and, but we didn't catch him, or they didn't want to sign a complaint, so we, so we observed him drive, didn't notice anything reckless. The last one, I stopped just last week, someone called it in, I got behind him, he wasn't doing anything reckless, but I stopped him anyway, say, I don't know if you're on your phone, or, and I knew the kid, said, you're, you've been called in. He's like, yeah, I was watching a video in my phone. Yeah, I would explain it. So all those things could be true.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Sheriff, I had one. I'm just curious, are, do your deputies ever get called to respond to complaints about drones flying over people's private property?
Yeah, we do.
And, I mean, is there, I don't know where that jurisdiction lies necessarily, or is it considered trespass? Is there anything your deputy can do about it, or is it just tell the guy, don't fly if you're drunk?
That's pretty much what we do, is tell them, be respectful of someone else's.
We've had a couple of those complaints just to the town hall, you know, a lot of times from visitors that come to a short term rental, and anyone said, my drone up over the ridge over there, so just curious.
One of the things that I did read in the stuff that the mayor sent, it sounds like you have some rules about short term rentals, right? And then, of course, enforcing them can be tough, but the rules are there, and that falls on the municipal officer to kind of follow up with that. So I, I think it's well recognized that it can be a, you know, it, it can be a source of income for people, but it also, if it's not monitored, it's, there's a, there's, someone bought a house down the street from me, and they, I, they probably had thirty people there, and it was, and I got really old really quick, so.
If you can answer this without giving away too many trade secrets, so to speak, can you, can you give us a sense of what your staffing looks like for various shifts? It comes up all the time in casual conversation with people, well, the sheriffs are always an hour and a half away, or whatever. It would be useful if we actually knew as much as you can tell us what the facts are for what's out there in the field, when that fun comes up about, oh, there's only one guy for Fridays or whatever nonsense you hear.
Sure, so we don't have many trade secrets, but, so our staffing is, we have about just over twenty deputies countywide. Five of them are based in Kemmer, the rest are based up here. One's assigned to the school full time, except for in summers, he works the street. One's assigned to investigations, and one's assigned to drug court. The rest are on patrol.
Domestic.
Yeah. And so our, our goal is to have at least two on at all times, and we do a pretty good job of that, but, you know, that's
Is that countywide?
That's not including Kemmer.
Okay, just up here.
Kemmer, Kemmer, it kind of, because the response time from Kemmer would be, yeah. So it's, we're not always an hour and a half away, but if we're on a domestic and, and, you know, there's an arrest being made, it could be, it could be a lot.
That's helpful, thank you.
We're, we're, we need to, we need to, you know, we need to start adding personnel. Like I said, we added one this year, I think we need to add at least one again next year. The towns want more, there's more people moving in, and it's just, it's some, there growing pains show up in the law enforcement side and a lot of other things like planning and zoning and all those other things that, that's kind of where the whole area is building through right now, so.
Thanks. I had another question. In other towns, the police have, you know, safety programs where, you know, you're bringing people in and teaching them all kinds of things, whatnot. It's not like you're not ready to staff that yet, but is that stuff you're looking forward to, that's, don't have any, we, please come and listen to this, similar on drugs, or this similar on this, or try and get some public information out on safety issues in the various towns, whatever.
Councilman Denny, can you use your microphone?
Yeah.
Sorry.
So, yeah, we, we would definitely be willing to do that. If the town sets something up here and has a safety night, and sheriff's office here, and maybe EMTs or someone like that as well, or just the sheriff's office, and you have a specific topic that you want to cover, we have presentations on identifying drugs that we've done at several different places. We do it at the schools, we've done it at the hospital, we've done it at businesses when they've requested it, so we could be more proactive in that, but certainly if you want, if you want to set something up for the town, you would be involved in that and, and take some guidance on what you think that needs to be done in the town, and would have some suggestions as well.
Yeah, we're, we're considering a safety board. One of those, one of those plans they would cover is more safety training for people and their orientation for personnel and whatnot, so I don't know if that was doable or not.
Yeah. Yeah, we'd be more willing to participate in anything like that that, that you think is, would be beneficial to the town.
Have you possibly, just kind of, excuse me off what Ron said, have you seen certain programs in other towns in our area that were really beneficial, like the neighborhood watch or anything that you would suggest?
So there, there is not many of those type, there, there are some quasi neighborhood watch things that pop up every once in a while. They're, they have some benefits and they have some challenges because you don't want to put somebody in a situation where they're, you know, perceive that they could take some action that they can't take, or that they're, put themselves into a situation where their safety is not, or their safety is compromised because they're confronting somebody that probably would be better handled by law enforcement, so there's really not any, there are a lot of programs out there nationwide, but none of them are really active they can start on. It's, I'm not saying that's, that there shouldn't be, there's just not, and we have done, we have been, you know, there's neighborhoods that get together and call, and we will go there on an evening and talk to them, and we have done that. there's neighborhoods that get together and call, and we will go there on an evening and talk to them, and we have done that periodically. If they're, if we're invited to come and talk about certain things and concerns that they have. If, if the neighborhood watch is something that, that the town wanted to participate in, I, I would support that and help in any way that I could do some training, so...
Is your position still the same about underage individuals operating four-wheelers and golf carts and whatnot? That you're not going to do anything unless they're reckless or breaking laws or whatever?
So my, my position hasn't changed. I, I, as far as if it's kids driving safe, but they don't have a license, that's not going to come to the top of the traffic priority list for us. And that's a, again, that's something that, um, when we sit down with the mayor, if that's important to her and the council, that we take more action, and, you know, that could be something that's looked at in the contract, but, um, there, yeah. I mean, I, I, I don't, if, we, we want to address safety issues, and if it's not a safety issue, then, um, just, if they're just riding a four-wheeler, then that's, my, my belief is it's not. I, I get that plenty of people disagree with me.
I'm not, if there's three or four kids on it, like...
Well, if it, if that's a safety issue, then, then that would fall under, yeah. So if they're hanging off of there, that's a little different story. If there's two on a four-wheeler and they're going slow, then, then I don't personally think that that's something that, um, that we need to kind of shut down, so I get that people don't agree with that, but...
I think one of the big fears on, you know, we got unlicensed drivers and kids and stuff is we don't do anything until somebody gets hurt or killed. And really then trying to nip it in the bud and say, no, you can't do that, okay? We wait until somebody is killed or hurt, and, and in an organization like we're in, you know, the grandparents are letting kids get away with murder, uh, up, up and down, and they, they bear some responsibility here, but nobody is...
Well, the, the reality is they bear all the responsibility, because we don't cite the twelve-year-old, we cite the parents, so...
But, uh, anyway, like I said, that's a fear I have, because I see them running around. Somebody's going to get hurt or killed. And then, you know, we'll change everything.
Yeah. Well, like I said, I, 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 I realize that my view is not, uh, maybe not that popular in this community. If I were to go out to Auburn Fairview and start chasing down kids on four-wheelers, I'd have a lot of competition at the end of the day. It, it's, it's different, it's different, but, um, I will say, the, the last fatality we had up here was an adult intoxicated, which is a whole different problem on, on the snowmobile. And we had a fatality on a golf cart that was an adult that was intoxicated. So I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, um, and, and I'm not implying that we, we don't want to address safety issues. I think we may disagree of what, what qualifies as a safety issue. I could blow sunshine and tell you I feel differently, but I could do that, so...
You wouldn't appreciate it.
We could blow sunshine and tell you we don't.
No, I agree. I, I don't, I don't, uh, I don't have any issue with, uh, that, that you're bringing it up, and I, I get it. I'm not trying to, um, I'm not trying to skirt the issue, I'm just going to be honest about it.
Okay, we have one more question back here.
Are the, are the rental agreements, is there any do, you know, wording in there that tells these people that are renting that what the rules are for the riding?
Yep, there, it's there. And they sign it, they know, so... Mike, did you have a question?
I just have a, not a question, just a comment. We're citizens, we live here. If you see fifteen kids riding on a golf cart, it's not hard to follow and find out what a good one, and get out and talk to his parents.
And, and Jim...
Get the adults involved.
Yeah, Jim has done that, and he's, and so have the deputies.
I've done that.
Yeah.
I've followed around, and I've went to let go of grandma's house. I'm, I'm a grandma. My kids have been riding on it. They've gone to my house, so look like a fake. Come tell me.
Yeah, so...
Well, I, I don't...
It's a responsibility.
I don't want anybody to take from what I said, that we haven't respond, we respond to these all the time. It's, it's not, um, but we're not going to be, as long as I'm the sheriff, we're not going to use citations for things that aren't going to rise to the level that we need to, um, take law enforcement action. We have no problem talking to the parents and, um, trying to shut down things that are, that are unsafe, so...
Okay, thank you so much. We sure appreciate it. We will get in touch. Thank you. All right, uh, we'll move on with the agenda. This is the public hearing portion of the agenda.
Um, we're actually, yes, sir.
And, and we have some action items, so the first one is Resolution Number twenty-three dash zero-nine dash twelve dash zero-zero-one. And Councilman Rock, would you like to read that, please?
Yes, um, shh, Resolution Number twenty-three dash oh-nine dash twelve dash zero-zero-one. Resolution of the Town of Star Valley Ranch to approve the transfer of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Water Fund System Replacement and Upgrade Reserve to the Water Fund Loan Repayment Reserve, whereas the Town of Star Valley Ranch transferred five hundred and eighty thousand from the Water Fund Cash Account into the Water Fund System Replacement and Upgrade Reserve on August eighth, twenty twenty-three, whereas the Town of Star Valley Ranch desires to ensure there are adequate funds in the Water Fund Loan Repayment Reserve to fund expected future loan payments. Whereas the Town of Star Valley Ranch has determined that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the originally transferred five hundred and eighty thousand dollars should be transferred to the Water Fund Loan Repayment Fund. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Town of Star Valley Ranch does hereby authorize the Town Clerk Treasurer to transfer three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Water Fund System Replacement and Upgrade Reserve to the Water Fund Loan Repayment Reserve, passed and adopted this twelfth day of September, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, um, could I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve Resolution Number twenty-three oh-nine dash twelve dash zero-zero-one.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been, uh, moved by Councilman Rock, second by Councilman Denny. Are there any, um, questions on this? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Uh, next item on the, um, is, uh, this is a motion to, um, for the lease and purchase of a twenty-twenty-three Caterpillar CS one-one G C vibrating compactor from Caterpillar Financial Services. That's a lease, a lease to buy. Um, could I get a motion?
Okay, I'll read it.
Can I read it?
I move the Town of Star Valley Ranch to approve Mayor Caffey and Byers as a town representative and authorize Mayor Caffey and Byers to sign the improvement documents for the lease and purchase of the twenty-twenty-three Caterpillar CS one-one G C vibrator compactor from Caterpillar Financial Services Corporation by entering into a governmental equipment lease purchase agreement with Caterpillar.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilman Denny, second by, um, Councilman Ellis. Um, any questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is, um, this is a, a bid award for our, um, budgeted road project. Could I get Councilman Merrill? Thank you.
I move the Town of Star Valley Ranch to approve the base bid amount of four hundred and sixteen thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars for twenty-twenty-three road project, and award the twenty-twenty-three road project HK contractor team out of Idaho Falls, Iowa, and authorize Mayor Byers to sign the appropriate documents.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been, uh, moved by Councilman Merrill, second by Councilman Rock. Um, any questions? Also, we discussed this today. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next item is a motion, uh, to also award a bid. Um, who would like to read that? Councilman Merrill, you'll do it?
I move the Town of Star Valley Ranch to approve the base bid amount of eight hundred and eighty-five seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars for Water Fund Project twenty-twenty-three, and award the project to the Vale Valley Construction LLC of Afton, Wyoming, and authorize Mayor Byers to sign the appropriate documents.
Second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilman Merrill, second by Councilman Denny. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, motion carries unanimously. Let's see. The next item on, on the agenda is, um, um, ordinance, and, um, I would like to know if we can have a, a motion to approve these ordinances by title only, title and, um, information, sorry. Could I have a motion to approve by title?
I move that we approve the ordinances by title and explanation.
Okay, and a second? Moved by Councilman Rock, second by Councilman Denny. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, motion carries. So the next item is Ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash, uh, zero-eight, and this is, uh, Councilman Merrill, so by title and explanation?
Um, Ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero-eight, Title Free Administration, Chapter Thirty-three Town Organizations. Um, there are no changes from the last reading, this is third reading, explanation is just, this ordinance is for the creation of roads at five-year-old and outlines procedures in accordance with the existing laws.
Okay, um, could I get a motion?
I move.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved by Councilman Merrill, second by Councilman Rock. Um, any discussion?
I can just clarify, which reading was this, for this one? I couldn't quite hear.
Road, the road board.
Third reading.
Third. Um, no other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, motion carries. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the, well, please, let me get to it, uh, Ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero-nine. This is, uh, Title Free Administration, Chapter Thirty-three Town Organizations, and this is, um, Councilman Rock.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-three oh-nine, Title Free Administration, Chapter Thirty-three Town Organizations. Um, this ordinance is for the creation of a travel and tourism board and outlines the procedures. This is the first reading of this ordinance.
Okay, um, any discussion? Hearing none, there's a motion. Sorry, I did that out of order, but can I have a motion?
I move, um, that we approve the first reading of Ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash oh-nine.
Okay, second? Moved by Councilman Rock, second by Councilman Denny. Uh, I already opened it up for discussion, so, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Very quiet here.
Sorry. I get that way by the end of the meeting, it's like goes down. Oh, there we go. All right. Uh, next item on the agenda is Ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash one-zero, and, um, Councilman Ellis.
It's Ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash ten. This is the first reading, Title Fifteen, Land Use, Chapter One-Fifteen. Explanation is updating to existing code, removing fees from ordinance, and making them set by resolution.
Okay, could I get a motion?
I move we approve Ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash ten.
Second?
I second.
Moved by Councilman Ellis, second by Councilman Denny. Um, any, uh, any discussion with the council? Audience?
I just don't understand it. I don't understand it.
What don't you understand?
Well, I just don't understand you raised all the fees, and then you're doing it, doing it by resolution. What does that mean? That's why I don't understand.
That means that we'll be doing it, um, the goal is to, um, move it to a resolution instead of in the law. So it'll go to a resolution, and, um, the other portion of that goal is to make sure that we go through every fee in town when we do budget. Presently, we don't do it that way, and so, um, that's, this is the beginning of that process. We'll start budget in March.
But there, will there's, there will still be a list of these?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just moving it to another form, basically.
Okay, that's what I didn't...
Okay, no problem. No problem. All right, no other questions? Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none opposed, um, motion passes unanimously. And, uh, the next item on the agenda is to, um, adjourn the meeting. Did I miss anything? Call Mayor Council, sorry. Okay. Does, um, Councilman, do you have anything you want to discuss? I don't have anything either. So, could I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved by Councilman Denny, second by Councilman Merrill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.